It's 6:00 PM, so we're calling the meeting to order of the Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School District, also known as the CDC. Are there any public comments? Seeing none in the semens crowd out there, we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The minutes from the October 16th meeting? Any discussion?
I'll move the consent agenda, you'll need a second.
Second. Are we taking items separately with your?
It's up to the chair, but you can do them separate or do them all together.
Are there any questions on the warrants? Then let's do them all together. Those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with all items? Say yes.
Raise your hand.
It was unanimous. Cash flow statement is in the drop box. It's for our informational only, right? Along with revenue and expenses. Committee reports. I think there was only one committee meeting since the last meeting, and that was the Policy Committee, where they discussed superintendent's evaluation and idling policy for vehicles. And no action was taken. There was discussion, some minor changes are being made. Action items, we have an ESP. We have to approve the ESP contract. There's an information sheet in your packet. Do we need to review all the items? It's a two-year contract with a retroactive pay increase. Along with a health insurance Article 18, and I'm not certain exactly what that is, but they now, we now have four different plans that employees can choose.
This will be, that, these plans will be available, are available as of January 1st.
Yeah.
The cost-sharing agreement between the old plan and the new plan is the same. There's, the district will pick up 86 percent, and the employee will be 14 percent. But the difference between the plans is that the new, the four new plans have some sort of, the out-of-pocket expense outside of the premium, which is unlike what we have currently, whether it's deductibles or coins.
As I understood it, the cost to the district is going to be zero. It's not going to change from what we're paying now.
Based on what we understand, this should be a cost-neutral change.
There is a 3 percent overall increase in salaries. And when we, for the benefit of the public, the ESP contract covers the paraprofessionals and some of the office staff, I believe, is under the.
And custodial.
There's one change which I was not familiar with from sitting in on a lot of the negotiations for this contract, where people will now receive overtime if they work their assigned work week, which in some cases is going to be 30 hours.
They're going to receive overtime in excess of their assigned work week if they work over 30 hours. So if their contracted time per week is, say, 32 hours, and they were asked to work more than that, the time above the 32 hours would be overtime. Whereas the way that the contract reads now is, overtime is paid after 35 hours if, you know, if your contracted hours are under that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
But is it only if you were asked? Is that.
Right, I mean, well, I mean, they, per the contract, they, I don't think they even refuse reasonable overtime, but they don't choose, you know, to get overtime, to get overtime unless they need it.
That might affect custodians more than anybody else.
We have field trips.
Yep, that's true.
Currently, all of our paraprofessionals, with the exception of one, are already working 35 hours.
So that's.
So it's, it's not a considerable change.
Right, for us, it's not a considerable change.
Right.
At all.
The ESP contract covers everybody, all the support personnel throughout the SVSU and this district.
I have just one question. And how many hours do you need to work in order to get healthcare?
You know, off the top of my head, I believe it's 30. But I don't, I, the, and the contract that I have is not the final contract, so I can't 100 percent answer it. But I will, let me look at what the one that I have.
I believe that's correct, because I have a part-time employee, and she can't work more than 29 hours a week. Otherwise, she becomes eligible for not only healthcare, but other full-time benefits. I know that's in New York, but I think that's part of the national, the national standards.
And, well, I guess my follow-up question would be, and how many employees do we have that work less than 30 hours?
We don't have any.
Oh, good. Right. I just have this concern, if you're working, I mean, we should pay their healthcare.
Yeah, we have.
I believe it was the teachers, the teachers' contract, the prior teachers' contract that had a different language for the hours, and I believe the ESP is the 30 hours.
Yeah, many of the changes in this contract now mirror what is in the teachers' contract. Is there any more discussion or questions?
I'll move approval of the ESP contract.
Jackie, that's 30 hours.
30.
Do I have a second for the?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
But what does ESP stand for? Education Support Personal.
There you go.
Extraterrestrial.
I don't think we have any of those.
Education Support Personal.
The only other right action item on the agenda is the resignation. And I'll turn the site over to Mike.
There is a resignation superintendent in the drop box. I would like to read it out loud. It says, "Dear Mike, please accept this as official notice of my resignation. As you know, over the last two years, I have been trying to relocate to a warmer climate. I've been offered a new opportunity with a company headquartered in Chesapeake, Virginia as a business system specialist, and I've decided to accept their offer. I've enjoyed my time with the center and have learned much about the education sector. I truly appreciate the faculty as well as the administration and staff. I never realized how hard teachers and staff work and how committed they have been every day to be successful with our students. Her last day at the center will be December 1st, and that is Sherri Spankborough, our active support. Sherri's been with us about five years. We wish her well and a warmer climate, so she's going to be hard to replace."
I assume that job has been posted already?
It has been posted, and we have actually had interviews this afternoon.
Superintendent's report.
Do you have to vote on that, or no?
We don't have to vote on that.
You don't?
No.
Okay, no. You can if you want, it's more ceremonial than anything, but, you know.
Chair's leaving.
Right, chair. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November meeting. I apologize for not being here last month, had an unexpected issue arise, and Meg, thank you for covering last month's meeting. Few things I have for you this evening. First off is NIASK, or the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, was here the weekend of November 6th. I know that some of the board members came to our, I guess, welcome reception, if you will, on Monday, the 6th. I think that went off very well. There was an 11-member team here for four, almost four full days. Our accreditation status and full report will not be available until April or May. That's when the commission votes on it. So what will happen is that sometime in December, until before the holidays, I will receive a copy of the report for factual checking only, and then it's not to be shared with anybody else. I send it back to the commission to correct any factual errors. So for example, Building Trades has five teachers. No, that's not factual, I have, we have one. Just things like that. And then what will happen is that report will be sent to the commission for full review, and it will be voted on in their April or May meeting, and then returned to us for everyone to see. A lot of work went into it, I know I've repeated it before, it's about 187 pages of study. We're only the second school in New England to want another new standards, so they're new standards. I think we're going to be just fine, you know, but we will not know our accreditation status until, re-accreditation, I should say, until spring. I fully believe that we'll be fully re-accredited, I have no reason to believe otherwise. On the exit interview, a couple of the items that were preliminary commendations. Number one was that our extensive transportation operations to provide access for the most students, the committee was very impressed with the, they couldn't believe the transportation operation that we run to get students here, to get students out on work-based learning. The number of field trips, the CTSO trips we take, they were just blown away by that. And I think that's, that's great, that's what we're just trying to do. And the second commendation that they made, where they were very impressed with the extensive work we've done over the last four years on work-based learning, and our 100 percent participation in some form of work-based learning, whether that be one-day job shadow to a full, you know, internship and everything in between. And so those were the two commendations. What they did say to expect in the past is NIASK would provide multiple commendations and multiple recommendations. My understanding is the new format, there will likely be one commendation and one recommendation for all the standards. The new philosophy is that if you're meeting the standards, then you're meeting the standards, there's nothing to compliment you on, you know, you're meeting the standard. So I guess not to expect a very lengthy report back, like there used to be, where there would be 10 or 12 commendations and 12 or 13 recommendations. They said not, not to expect that. So we're eagerly looking forward to the report. I mean, it's been a year-long process leading up to this, and then four full days with, you know, a team of 11 folks, primarily from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Maine, and some Massa, I'd say Massachusetts. Nobody from Vermont, and one more from Rhode Island. Nobody from Vermont, which was interesting. We do not get to choose the committee that comes here, and is chosen for us by the NIASK Commission, so, you know, I think it was a very interesting experience for all of us. A lot of compliments on the facility. These are unofficial comments that are now our official, because they're on CAT TV. A lot of compliments on the facility, you know, and the looks of it, and the quality of machinery and equipment, things like that. And that's, you know, that's a testament to the support of this community and this board for the work that we, that we do. I'd also like to recognize that Lori Wright, she's been named DECA Advisor of the Year. If you follow our Facebook page, she was given that award last Thursday at the director's meeting up in Randolph. One of four people chosen in the state as a CTSO advisor, so we're very proud of her for that. Also, we're currently looking at next year's class schedule already. I know it seems like school just started, but just like we're going to start looking at the budget, the schedule is already being looked at for next school year, about what's the best fit for kids, and how does it work, believe it or not. Scheduling though, won't take place until late winter, early spring, but we're already looking at course selections and things now, because in December, the eighth grade, eighth graders will be here for their tours, and they're already going to be looking and choosing what classes they're going to take next year, which seems crazy, right, but it's the way the process is. So also, what I had for you last month, but I wasn't here, and I wanted to be able to provide it to you, I told you I have kind of an enrollment snapshot, a little bit different picture. As you remember, I've talked about over the last, this is my fourth year, but over the last four years, building capacity in programs we already have, that's what we've talked about, not adding new programs, and kind of filling the capacity. So I've done a work study over the last couple months to look, I can go back as far as, you know, 2000, but it doesn't matter, I went back six years. What I did is I put together a student count for you over the past six years, semester one, semester two. I give you the FTE counts over, over those six years. The number of programs we had, and the number of classes we had, total seats available, and what we were utilizing. And I think you're going to see, I have a handout here, it is in the drop box, but I wanted to provide you a copy of this as well. I want to walk you through it. And I'll put my cell phone. So what you're looking at is your FY13 at the top left. The numbers in blue represent actual students in seats. Okay, those are the kids that we're serving. So I'm going to walk you across the top here. So in 2013, in the first semester, there were 410 students in the center. During the second semester, there were 316 students in the center. At that time, you had 20 programs and 21 classes, so 41 options for students. There was an available 1,312 seats with that number of programs and classes, and you were utilizing 55 percent of the center's capacity. I'll walk you through a little bit further. So the same thing in 2014, you had 425 students first, 349, you were at 64 percent capacity. The same thing for FY15, although program numbers had started to dwindle. The board decided to either reduce or close some programs for budgetary reasons and also low enrollment reasons. In FY16, you can see our enrollment was 360 and 300, with 14 programs and 13 classes, and that's at a 76 percent utilization. And finally, I'll move down a couple more to FY18, where we are now. You're at 385 this semester. I project 330 for the second semester, that's based on history, and you are at 86 percent capacity in the center. And I think this number speaks very highly to what we've been trying to do, is to fill the capacity in which we have with the programs we have. What I find most interesting about this, if you look at the FY13, you have 410 students and 20 programs and 21 classes. This year, FY18, you only have 25 students less in six less programs and eight less, eight less classes. That just shows we only had so much capacity to begin with. The sending school numbers are going down, we've talked about that. Mount Anthony, it's not just Mount Anthony. Arlington is around 200, 210. Mount Anthony is, over the years, has dropped 12, 11, 10, 9, and now we're in the 900s. And so, as I've said, for us to be able to maintain enrollment throughout those drops in years is, I'm really happy with that, and I hope that the board and the community is as well. You know, we've reduced programs for various reasons, and we have essentially the same amount of students, which is interesting. So, you know, we're building the capacity, and 86 percent capacity, I think, is, is pretty good.
But you save money, because you, what you don't have in this chart are how many teachers?
Correct. There's, Stephanie and I spent a fair amount of time today saying, how can we somehow tie a number, you know, a financial number to this? And there are so many complicating factors, it's just not, we wanted to do that, and we just couldn't come up with a way that would give her a fair reflection, because there are years where we have roof repairs, where we buy a bulldozer, where, you know, so we, the true savings really is in the number of programs and salary and benefits that you, from those, from those classes.
So did you reduce it by nine teachers?
No.
No.
It's not a one-to-one.
It was, it's not a one-to-one. Some teachers taught multiple classes and programs, and so what I'll give you with these numbers, where I came up with them, is the state report that we submit every year, that's where the blue numbers come from, and also the FTE counts, that's where, those are fixed in stone from the state. The number of programs, I simply went through our programs and studies, and I counted them up. And I counted the number of classes. And then each class has an average, an average of 16 seats. I did the maths, multiplied 16, you get 1,300 seats, and then, and now you have 832. So I'm very happy with this. I think the center is, we're as lean as we're going to get, to be quite honest with that. I don't think there's anywhere else to go, as far as, we're almost at capacity, and that's where we want to be. And what's really helped is you've increased access to higher-quality programs. Instead of slicing the pie, you know, 20 ways, it's only sliced 14. And so programs have been able to benefit, and I think the quality of programs has gone up, and students in the community recognize that, and that's why you're seeing more full programs. Do we have room to grow? Yeah, we have, of course we do. But to maintain this enrollment between 380 and 390 first semester is, that's where we're going to be, you know, short of some, some miracle, that's where we're at.
To go from, are there any plans to go to, like, 15 or 16 programs? Are there any hot programs that every other tech center in Vermont has that we don't, that students are really clamoring for, that, just out of curiosity?
Yeah, so it's, it's definitely regional. For example, some parts of the state have very robust, you know, regional food and agriculture programs, and we've tried that here, and it hasn't worked. The one program that I say that, you know, we should consider looking at in the future, I'm not saying the next fiscal year, but maybe a year or two out, is bringing back, and we adopted the curriculum a couple years ago, is a strong IT program. We are a tech center, and IT is also part of my background, and I think that we should have a strong computer technology and networking program at the center. It's ever-growing jobs, technology's going to go nowhere, and it should be a program of the future. And it's not just computer repair, it is app development, it's web development, et cetera. So if I would say we were to add anything, that would be the thing that we should probably think about adding, but done thoughtfully and carefully, so that we don't have the situation where we open a program that we feel is quality, and no one's in it, and then we try to figure out why, you know. So that would be my recommendation going forward.
Has there been any thought to, like, a green energy, big umbrella type of program? Is that being talked about amongst superintendents of tech centers?
Uh, depend, not as a standalone, at, at high schools, yes, actually. For those that don't, either don't send students to a tech center, or those that can't get to a tech center. Not so much as standalone programs, but as add-on programs, for example, like Building Trades. You know, it's, it's an additional specialty field, if you will, no different than, than HVAC, or plumbing, or electrical, et cetera. Part of it is, you know, compounded and confined by the day and the time which we have kids. You know, we only have them for a short amount of time in a, in a day, and there's only so many resources to go around. So I think what's interesting is, I've had the opportunity to visit most tech centers, at least in the state of Vermont. You'd think they look the same, and they look completely different, as far as what programs they offer, and it really does seem to be regional, of what is the, what is the hot program, if you will, for that region. You know, if you go to Patricia Hannaford Center of the Middlebury, they have a robust farming and agriculture and a chicken processing plant, you know, we just don't have that here. So, you know, our, our most popular programs here are, continue to be medical professions, automotive, Building Trades, accounting and finance and business, are huge programs. So that's, some of those are actually almost full.
In the newspaper a couple of days ago, it cited that this, so few tech centers now, or schools, are supporting programs for trades. And, and we're doing that, but I wondered if we could expand on some of the trades, you know, like get, get electrical in, or get plumbing in, or.
So that is certainly one of, one of my long-term, long-term goals for the school. When I say we shouldn't add anything, I don't mean we shouldn't enhance something that we already have. You know, I see an expansion of Building Trades, for example, to include those components. You know, an expansion of, which we're trying, medical professions to, for other pathways. You know, we can't train everybody for everything, we just don't have that kind of capacity. But I think we can certainly enhance certain programs to add those components to it, whether it be plumbing, green energy, et cetera. That would be, those are my plans, anyway.
Well, even culinary could go into business.
Sure.
You know, establishing a little cafe.
Sure, could be more with hospitality and tourism, exactly.
And I think for me, as a college person, it's important that those lead to, and be, you know, to the possibility of going to college, should a student want to do that as well, so you could get some credit.
Right.
For, in a Vermont Tech or someplace like that.
Right.
Which we have, but continuing to make that up as well.
Right.
And I understand that green energy might be a better fit, like in adult ed or something like that, for people who are retraining. I'm not necessarily advocating that it be in Building Trades, but just that, wondering if that's a field that's being talked about.
Right, but we see these natural fits in, in programs, you know, where if we can find more time, if you will, in the day and in the academic years, we can, we can fit them in. And I think thinking differently about that, particularly through adult education, and, you know, a year 13 or 14, is a way to, maybe one way to accomplish that. So that's the enrollment information, you know, that I wanted to present to you, I hope it's a helpful picture.
It's good.
Of what we have, where we're at.
Excellent.
I have a question.
Sure.
Incidentally, for, I would like to see a revitalization of the engineering program, if we can ever find a teacher that'll.
Who will accept the low salary.
Who will accept our low salaries, which are dictated by the contract.
Again, that, that could be in, in Building and Trades.
Yeah, Ed, I, you know, I agree with you that when engineering was here, it was a, you know, it was a robust program, there's no question about it. I know that through manufacturing and design, you know, we're trying to integrate some engineering components to it.
Yes, I know we are.
And working with what we have, and, you know, still trying to build partnerships with, with other organizations such as MAC Molding, and we've been at many meetings with them, and, you know, it's one step at a time, and that's.
Well, it's a hard slot.
It's a very hard slot.
To fill. And I think one of the primary advantages of having an engineering program at this level of education is that there are kids who think they want to be engineers, and after they're in the program, they either decide that they are, go and they continue, or they decide, it's not for me. Which I think is very useful, but when somebody's on their way to college, know what they don't want, as well as what they may want. I have a question about total seats.
Mm-hmm.
And utilization. What is that? When we say total seats, what are we talking about?
So each program, each class, has literally 16 seats.
Right.
Tech, tech ed regs say 16 is the max you can have in a class, there are some other variations.
Okay, so you multiply the 16 seats.
Yeah, by the number of, by the number of programs and classes, exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's what I thought it meant.
Yep. No, not a bad question.
I wasn't sure.
If there's any more questions on that, I'll move on to the next piece. Thank you.
You too.
Meg, I can turn to you for a little bit of adult ed.
Well, we finally got the CDL Permit Prep class off the ground. They're two, two classes in, and students seem to be settling in, so that's good.
Meg, how many people are enrolled in the class?
Three. We're at three, yeah.
We had, we started at six, and.
Started with six.
Started with six, yeah. But with any, any new class, we know that, you know, it's going to take some time to grow it. You know, we will, we do plan on running additional classes, so I know I've gotten some phone calls around whether or not we're going to offer it again, so I think after the new year, we'll probably get some more, some more interest. Also, the next cohort of LNA will start tomorrow night. The class is full, and I have four applicants on the list for the next cohort, so that's good. And we're working with MAC Molding to develop a blueprint reading. And we're working with MAC Molding to develop a blueprint reading class at their, at their spot, so, we're looking forward to that, too.
With the, if I could add on to the CDL prep class piece, you know, we expected the class to have five or six the first time out, and that's what it started with, and one of the things that we've learned, it's not as easy to get your CDL permit as one might think, it's not as easy as getting your driver's permit, there are a lot of things that go along with it, which are pre-employment drug screening and physicals, and there's all sorts of things to, just to get this, let alone passing, passing the test. And so, we've learned a lot, I've also learned, there, I know there's a lot of interest in CDL for our community, just off of Facebook alone, the number of hits and shares for that one posting for a CDL prep class was over 1,500.
Wow.
I didn't expect enrollment 1,500, but that's 1,500 people who have at least seen it, that's a lot, and that's, that's pretty true for a lot of our posts, actually, some posts generate 2,000 or 3,000 views in a week or two, and other ones hardly get one or two, I can't quite figure out what it is.
Yeah, it's the algorithms.
What it is, but...
It's all the algorithms, it's a mind game.
You know, Facebook is, is great, is great for us, and so for those that are watching, I'll, I'll say it again, it's facebook.com/svcdc, you can see the great things that are going on here at our center, there's a post made on there at least once a day. The other piece that I want, really excited to talk to you about with adult education, is, we've been looking to, well, we're not looking to, but we're about to partner with Penn Foster College to offer a certified veterinary assistant course. It is a NAFTA-approved program, I'm working with local area veterinary hospitals, they are very happy about this, because it is one of the three NAFTA-approved programs around, and it's about, it's about a seven-month program that is done in conjunction with, with Penn Foster, as well as us, where we provide the, the bricks and mortar, if you will, and academic support, and the program also requires an eight-week externship at a local veterinary hospital. So, we're excited about that, will that class run every year? No, we don't wanna flood the area with veterinary, certified veterinary assistants, but it is a national certification, and I think they'll be interested in it. We're gonna advertise for a kickoff date in January, after the start of the new year, I think it, I know it's very, it'll be very affordable, I hope attractive to folks in our service region. The other piece to that, is, the next piece we're gonna roll out is pharmacy tech, that is also a program that's available to us through Penn Foster, that also requires an eight-week externship, and they already have partnerships with CVS and Walgreens, and so, we are looking forward to the partnership with them. There's a lot of things we can do, but I wanna start out slow and see what's successful first, you know, maybe that veterinary assistant, they'll plan a ten to run this course, and we run one or two cohorts of it, and that's, that's all we have for now, and then maybe it's pharmacy technician, there are all sorts of things we can do with them, so, look forward to that sometime in January, that's gonna be the start date for veterinary assistant.
Do they teach the class, or do we have to look for a person to teach that class?
Uh, no, they, they provide the content and the instructor for the course, it is primarily self-led, online, however, what's, what their statistics show is that a student who enrolls by themselves tends to have about a 20% completion rate of the program. A student who enrolls with the support of a school, whether it be a high school, a tech center, a tutorial center, some form of support, has a, over an 80% success rate.
So, does the student take the class at home?
The student can take the class at home, we are still designing what time they're gonna have to spend here with us, because we think that's important, to provide the one-on-one counseling, the career, career services, and the academic support that they're gonna need to be successful. It may not be specific to veterinary courses, veterinary course, but academic support in general, we're hoping for a cohort of three to four to run together, so there is support within, within their own program, and that's kinda what we're hoping for.
Rob? Can you tell me a little bit about Penn Foster College, or tell everyone a little bit about Penn Foster, I don't know if that's a regionally accredited college, or what?
Sure.
Tech, tech school, online-only school, like what is...
Yep, sure, so Penn Foster, there's Penn Foster, there's Penn Foster College, and Penn Foster offers a huge variety, and this is without looking here, a huge variety of programs, including high school completion programs, career certificates, career diplomas, associate degrees and bachelor's, bachelor degrees. It is an online school, Penn Foster, is, what I understand, is not having brick and mortar college anywhere. They are accredited, they have multiple accreditations depending on what region they're serving, you can look them up at pennfoster.edu online, they'll give you all sorts of information, they have hundreds and hundreds of, of different programs, and what I was looking for was ones that had national credentials attached to them, like the veterinary assistant, for example. You can enroll, someone can enroll in a Penn Foster class on their own, if, if they wish to, but they're, they won't receive the crucial academic support that you would have with, as being a partner school with Penn Foster. So, I would, if you want more information, pennfoster.edu, there's a lot of information on there to kinda regurgitate, but they are accredited, both nationally and regionally, depending on...
In, in terms of money, they pay the whole, the student would pay the whole tuition?
Correct.
And nothing would come through us?
Uh, no, so, the, being a partner with Penn Foster, we are given a partnership rate, if you will, of, of tuition, and then we, as a center, can set the tuition rate, what we believe is appropriate, to provide the support services, et cetera. So, lost my train of thought for a second, Jerry.
I'm sorry.
So, the students will pay us directly, and in turn, will be billed by, by Penn Foster. The nice thing about many of these programs, particularly, they're calling them career diplomas, is because they are non-degree programs, they're primarily eligible for VSAC grants, so it may be the tuition is covered for the student to begin with through grants, and so, there are a lot of good, there are a lot of good features to this. We currently partner, as you probably know, with Ed2Go, not that Ed2Go is bad at all, this is just a different version of that, that seems to be much, in my opinion, much more robust, and provide much more support for both the school and the students, and what we're really excited about is the not, because they're non-degrees, they're eligible for VSAC grants and other grants, which is a huge, it's huge for people.
So, one of the things that I just, what I think we need to be clear with people that are in these programs, is that they are career diploma programs, and they are not...
Correct.
...college credit type of, you know, apply this to a future degree someplace else, so that they're very clear that they're in a...
Certification program.
Certification, eight-month, and that these employers accept this, but BTC may not accept your credit from here towards the degree program, because it says right on here they're not.
Exactly, and if you...
They're regionally accredited for their non-degree granting programs.
For their non-diplomas, right.
And so, we just need to be clear with the people taking these classes, so they understand, because students don't understand any of that.
Right, so, what we don't want, we don't want is just credit collecting and thinking it can go somewhere else, we're...
Right.
Particularly looking to partner with, you know, certificate programs that, that are approved, and that have some sort of industry credential at the end of them, that's a very good point, Rob, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, just, just as long as people going into the program understand that, that CCV or someplace else may not accept this program.
Also, what's, is important to Penn Foster is, they also want... They don't want any confusion, when students who, we will enroll, we've, we've chosen to do our own enrollment option, where students will come in, like our adult ed model, they'll meet with a counselor, we'll get, hook them up with VSAC, whatever other agency may provide funding with them, we'll wedge to the student, just, just like it was a regular class year. And Penn Foster wants that, and they don't want any confusion that it's any, anyone else but them and us partnering together, you know, they don't wanna make sure it's not referenced with Ed2Go, or with another college, or whatever, they're very clear about that, so, anyway, I think it's all, all good news, and, you know, we're looking forward to, to the partnership with, with them.
Just a couple more questions.
Sure.
At one point you mentioned adult ed committee, have you, you given any consideration to that, and also, these programs that you've chosen, what's been the, the thought process in choosing that tech and pharmacy, where's your info from? Okay, yeah.
So, as far as an adult education committee, really that was, the board had chosen to take up a, a committee, and as far as I'm, as far as I know, there's been no action taken on developing a, a committee of the board, I've not heard from, from anybody on it whatsoever, so we have continued to, you know, do what we think is best for adult education, as far as the, what's the process to pick, pick and choose, you know, we've worked very closely with Melanie Letourneau from the Department of Labor, that's where the CDL came from, actually, I'm meeting with Melanie tomorrow morning at 10:30.
Yeah.
She gives us great advice on what the needs are of the community. As far as choosing veterinary assistant, choosing pharmacy tech, the areas that we see here, through the Department of Labor and through other research, is that the medical field is huge, we could offer phlebotomy, and, and LNA, and a home healthcare, there are all sorts of things that we should be offering, or could be offering, it's just the capacity to which, which we can do it. One of the things that we learned, that I learned anyway, is that we were looking to also offer a home health, home health aid certification certificate program with Penn, and in Vermont, that is an LNA, that's the, that's the same, so we already offer a robust LNA program, so why would we partner with somebody else to, to do that? So, that's the information that, that we've used, it's primarily a Department of Labor, and also, you know, interest, picking something we haven't done before, or offered before, at least in this area, I know we've never offered a veterinary assistant class, and we have students talking about it all the time, high school students, and when I speak with, you know, a local, local veterinary hospitals, who say, "That would be great to have a certified program," and that's, that's what I'm going off of.
The pharmacy tech, wasn't that quite popular when it was, when you had a very popular adult ed program a number of years ago? Was it pharmacy tech? I know there was a pharmacy class.
Right, in the five years that I've been here, I don't believe we've had a strong pharmacy class.
There was a course, there was a course developed...
Right, that we may have had one person in, but perhaps pre, you know, before 2013, perhaps they had one...
There might have, there might have been Jessica many years ago, but...
No, I'm thinking in recent years, maybe I assumed it was so popular because it was always, it was always available, it was always online.
They were developing it to be a model that was gonna be distributed, I believe, to other centers to use as well, is that...
Right, from what I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, you know, what's, what's different is, we see, you know, we used to see tons of offerings, if you will, for, for adult education, and, you know, 90% of those courses never ran, they were a lot offered, and how can a course run if no one signs up for it, you know, or just one person signs up, it's, it's hard, and so, we're just trying to focus on what we're, what we're being told the community needs, you know, from our partners.
And I think what's important, very important, is that there not be duplication within the community, and I know Wendy comes to the workforce and education meetings that are held at CCV, and she can bring that information back...
Yep.
...about what's being talked about in the community, because a lot of partners come together...
Right.
...in those meetings, so, you know, not, not having three LNA programs trying to compete in our small community, and these types of things are important, that the CDC be coordinating with other entities in town, like the tutorial center, and other places that are offering adult education, so that we're maximizing the return on what we're offering, and not fighting over students with other programs.
And that's, Rob, that's a, that's a really good point, we've been very, very careful not to have, excuse me, duplicative services, there's no reason to duplicate something that's already in town, there just isn't.
Unless we can do it better.
Unless we can do it, I'll give you that count, yeah.
Since the inception of our LNA program, other programs have popped up...
Right.
...which is why I think that we've cut back on the amount of offerings that we have, just to make them...
We were the first LNA offering, and then, you know, it, other people caught on to it, and, and centers opened their own, and so...
Veterans Home does one, too.
Correct, so we only run one cohort now, it's one or two, depending on the need, where before we probably could have ran four or five in a year, if it was possible, you know, so that the community has changed, the needs have changed.
Right.
You know, and, for example, we're working with CCV on the CPT program, which is the, no, it's a certified production technician, because we've made the, we've made upgrades to our facility, in our manufacturing facility, that, you know, makes us a more attractive partner for some of these programs, so, you know, we do work closely with community organizations to, for partnerships, and, for example, you know, VetAssist doesn't, doesn't clash with anybody in town, or in state, for that matter, even Vermont Tech doesn't offer it, so, it's, you know, that's, that kinda careful thinking and choosing, will it be successful? I don't know, we've got nothing to lose by trying it, and that's my thought.
So, and a very basic question, that's my ignorance, and who pays, who pays for these classes, do the students pay to take those classes?
Students will pay tuition, right.
Okay.
Right.
What's, what's the range on that, just out of curiosity?
So, so, a veterinary assistant certified course will, will run anywhere between 1,500 and $1,800.
Okay, and VSAC could help through their non-degree granting program?
Correct.
Could help.
More than likely will, I mean, it's not guaranteed, of course, but that'd also be Department of Labor, Department of Labor funds, all, there's all sorts of funds.
Is there somebody here that can help students navigate that process of applying for the VSAC?
Yes, with the VSAC, yeah.
Okay, 'cause doing that on their own is very confusing, to, especially as adults on that are not as savvy about the process.
No, we help facilitate that, we have a login to see where grants are.
And we work with an outreach counselor that's just for us, so, she's a great contact and a great resource.
Okay, does Department of Labor pay for people who are unemployed or anything like that, too, do they fund them to come...
Yes, sometimes.
Sometimes, to these programs?
Yep, and that's where, you know, we're, because they are non-degree, I think they have a much greater success of being funded by, by grants, and other, less out-of-pocket, you know, traditional tuition, if you will, so...
Would you say the majority of people who sign up for these programs come from the Department of Labor? Is that your greatest arm in the marketing plan?
I think it depends on the year, what the timeframe.
Yeah. I don't know, that's hard to, to answer, you know, just looking at this current LNA class, it's, it's pretty much 50/50 between, well, I shouldn't say 50/50, it's 50/25/25, 50% of the students are coming through, through their employer, their employer is paying for the LNA course, and then I would say 25, you know, Department of Labor, and 25 VSAC, that's how this current one, but it's not always like that, you know, it varies.
Historically, adult ed has, has basically responded to what employers in the region...
Oh, yeah, of course.
...expected and needed and asked for, and courses and programs will be developed to accommodate that. And if you go into a recession, they stop spending money on educating their own employees, and...
Now, is that, are you guys going out and asking employers, or is BCIC telling the CDC, "Hey, we, we need this," I mean, how does that information, I'm sure it's a various ways, but, you know, what are, how primarily are you getting that information from employers to say, "Hey, I got, I got a real need here"?
They call us, I mean, mostly they call us.
Do they? Okay, so they know to do that, I guess, is what it boils down to.
Well, you, you also have the advisory committees, each one of the areas, the 14 areas have, have advisors, correct?
Everyone is required to have an advisory committee.
Yes.
Some are more active than others.
Of course.
I'm just, I particularly ask that question because I'm thinking of the person who is happy in their profession, but would like to become a certified veterinarian...
Assistant.
Assistant, thank you. How, how are they hearing about it if they don't see it on a Facebook page, or see someone that shared it?
Well, you mean, we should take out an ad?
And we do advertise.
We do advertise.
We have done that.
Yeah.
Although, more recently, we've found more success on, on Facebook.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we've found free advertising... Yes, we found free advertising to be the most effective, actually. Including for job postings and everything else.
Do you do the boost also?
When it's available. It's not always available to us as an, as an organization.
Because you have to pay?
I'm not certain exactly why boost is not available on all of them, but it's not always an option for us.
It might not meet the criteria, because then it's considered an ad. So, Facebook has all kinds of criteria you have to follow to do a Facebook ad.
Yeah. It's very interesting on the backside of it.
Thanks, I just had some nuts and bolts questions.
They're great questions, no?
Glad to see the work getting into a few programs here.
I think he's also volunteering to be the committee chair.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, no. No, don't.
We could also note that people over time have always asked for an apprenticeship type program for electrical work and HVAC. And those are essentially controlled by the state and not every
So, is CDL?
Yeah. And not every tech center has the capability of providing those classes, because you can have a classroom portion of it, but you also need to spend several years working as an electrician apprentice before you become a fully licensed electrician, or plumber for that matter. And the state and the Vermont Technical College are actually in control of that and not the technical centers.
You know, and as we venture more into these, more advanced type programming for, I'll say for adults, it doesn't necessarily have to be for adults. You know, we, we learn a little bit every time we do it. And we've learned a lot about, about commercial driver's licenses in Vermont and, seriously, and all kidding aside, and what it's going to take for us to become a driving, a certified driving school, which is regulated by the agency of transportation. And so, we have the list, we're working on it. And, you know, the goal is by the end of the school year to be a certified driving school. It's a process you have to work through.
And then do or just pass the test?
The whole nine yards.
Oh. The other thing, Ed, is Wendy and I have been meeting with area businesses around, you know, revitalizing some apprenticeship programs. And it's a committee that came out of the workforce development and education group that meets in town. So, I think folks are really interested in revitalizing some of the apprenticeship programs that, or creating new ones because of community needs, so.
I inadvertently indicated that we weren't interested and that's not true. We are.
It's a hot topic in higher ed right now too. So, this college is getting more expensive, so I think I forwarded you that article on the Chronicle of Higher Education and so. It's coming up. One more question about adult ed, sorry. Are we marketing these programs to graduating seniors at all as an opportunity to stay?
You see the smiles.
I'm saying staying on, but I don't know if that's necessarily the appropriate term for a 13th year. Special ed students that maybe could stay a little longer.
We're going to let the cat out of the bag tonight, I guess, since you asked, because we're still kind of working on that, but yes.
We already have one program doing that, right?
Cosmetology, right. But, yes, we are looking with these partnerships for students who we know are either not college-bound, maybe they can't afford it, but they, we want to offer them more advanced skill training and certifications, what I've called grade 13, you know, those would be students who have graduated one of our programs. And they come back here, if you will, and have a three-part, I feel like I'm repeating myself, I'm sorry, a three-part component where there is a, we can partner with an institution, perhaps it's Penn Foster, maybe it's somebody else. And we provide them with the academic piece, we provide them with a bricks and mortar piece. They know the school, they know their teachers, they know the layout of the land. And the third component is they have that required intern or externship with, with an employer. And I think that that can be a really successful option for a lot of students coming out of our programs. And I just do, for advanced certifications. And I think, you know, we've talked about, not loosely, but really, hardly taking a look at it, at offering it to seniors this year for next year. But the question is, you know, what is that, what is that program? What is that, that certification? What's the one that's going to be successful? So that students can see it's successful, the community can see it's successful. And, you know, we talk, we talk about adult ed as like it's a separate entity and then really adult ed is just, it's another component of what we do, you know, as our programs. And so, so I'm working on that and
And I, I think that's great. I mean, the opportunity to take those, I'll just call them short-term non-degree programs here and essentially stay on for the student who is, may not be college-bound for any number of reasons is awesome. It's a huge service that this school could be providing. So, if, whether it's through adult ed technically or whatever, I mean, it's the fact that we can offer, could offer a couple of those programs or maybe others in the future that represent a workforce need, that can offer a short-term direct path to employment.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's huge.
I think it's just, it's just thinking differently about it. It's like, like we've done with our daytime programs and what we've been able to do over the last four, you know, four or five years, probably four years. Just like, you know, just like I, the program capacity utilization, I mean, we're just starting to look at, you know, adult education in a different way and having best-serve students who are, who are graduating from our programs but, you know, are not college-bound for whatever reason that may be, and there are many of them.
There's a whole bunch over at the high school too.
Correct. Doesn't have to be students that start, they went out of our programs.
It could be a non-Anthony student or an Arlington student who might.
Absolutely. It could be any student in the region that wants to, that wants to take one of these, you know, non-degree certificate courses with us.
I'm sure guidance counselors would love that option. Would love to be able to have.
Years ago, I was involved in discussions with the House Education Committee about allowing a 13th year. For example, if a senior starts a program, auto mechanics in a senior year, we wanted him to be able to, or her, be allowed to come back for that second year of the program. And essentially, the Education Committee did not understand what the request was. And they said, even if we did, we don't have the money to support that. And I don't know that that has changed.
It has not. Once the, what the tech ed regs say is that when a student graduates and receives a high school diploma, they are considered an adult student, period. And that they must then, you know, pay tuition or whatever the fee is to take classes at the tech center. It does distinguish what a high, is a high school diploma. It is not a high school completion program or a GED program. It is a high school diploma. And so, students that have a GED, have a GED, have earned a GED are eligible to take any of our programs, our daytime technical programs at, at no cost to that, to that student. We'll build the towns directly for that. And that's something that we've, it's kind of new to us. We kind of uncovered this year in the, in the tech ed regs, it's literally like reading the state law, you know, and or, and drilling down what, you know, what constitutes a high school diploma. And that is graduating from a high school, as simple as that sounds, but.
Great. Thanks. I think that's really great.
That's the end, that's the end of my report. Other questions?
For the benefit of the public, what Mike was referring to is if you do not have a diploma from a high school, you can come here, no matter how old you are, and be in our programs.
Correct.
Okay, I guess we're to the chairman's report and I obviously don't have a report. However, I did attend the, the meeting with the NEAS people. And I talked to the four individuals that were part of that team for quite a bit that night. And all four of them commented that they were very impressed with the enthusiasm of all the instructors here at the CDC that stood out to them. And they commented on it over and over. They also commented on the facility and how nice it was. And I never got to explain to them that when this facility was built, when it was being planned, the teachers that were here went off and visited other career development centers around New England and decided what they really wanted in our facilities and how it was going to be laid out and set up. And they came back and talked to the architects and that's why we have the building that we have.
You also have an excellent maintenance staff and facility that keep up the building. You know, it's easy to let a building go very quickly. It certainly isn't the case here.
I just talked to one teacher about that whole NEAS process. He was excited about it and felt good about the work that they had done and the reception that they'd gotten from the NEAS people and, and the work, the teamwork that had developed through that, through the process as well. So, it was really a, you know, I think it was positive, it sounded like it was a positive experience for just about everybody who was involved, although it was a lot of work for the teachers. They still felt pretty positive about it.
Right. I would add a little bit of stress factor there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know that. But I mean, you know, I've been through a couple of them myself, but I, yes, absolutely. They just felt good about working together in that process.
The only question I heard that evening was, there were some people that wondered why some of the, the shops have stored as much material as they have. And I explained to them that very often industry will give us materials and equipment to use and we don't have a big storage building to put it in. And that's why it's here. Eventually it does get used in our, in program activities. And they were happy with that.
That's true.
Other, does anybody else have any other comments or concerns?
We need to set up a finance committee meeting.
Thank you.
Maybe sometime next week. I'm pretty flexible, so. Do it morning or afternoon, whatever time is good for
For everybody.
How many people do you usually have for that?
Usually there's three.
Three or four.
Three or four anyway, yeah.
Yep.
Are any, anybody here, are they already on the committee?
Well, I'm the chair, so I don't know who else is on.
It's to me, it's historically been, it's on my wall, it's Fran, it should be, I know Ricky's on it.
Yeah, Ricky.
I think Ed is on finance.
You have been in the past.
Yeah. I'd have to look at the list in my office, I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized, all the committees. But we, you know, we can certainly meet next week.
Yes.
We will have, most of the teachers' budgets are, are, most are in. We're just trying to get a preliminary, look at it anyway, so.
Right. One of the big factors, I think, in the budget planning will be the amount that the state is going to be allowing for per pupil. And I don't anticipate that we'll see that until December 1st, but we can definitely meet next week and have a preliminary discussion. But until I know what that on behalf is, it's really going to be hard to talk about.
Or we can wait until after you get that figure, if it's easier for you.
Um, I, it's
Either way, for us to plan, it's what the committee wants.
It's just, I'm not, I'm anticipating that there could be potentially more change, you know, normally I like to start and then we can kind of work our way down to where we're going to be, but we may have, you know, depending on what the state comes out with, it could be, there could be some interesting conversation.
Yeah. We could have it sometime next week and so we get a snapshot.
What we did last year, I mean, the first meeting could be just informational, like here's what we're seeing, here's what we're thinking, and, you know,
Sure.
No decisions being made at that meeting.
Yeah.
And then the following one could be the next week in December and we should have that number from the state by then, which really is going to drive our tuition and our, whatever we're going to do.
Yeah.
So, if you want to set a date next week, just
What's good for people, Wednesdays?
So, Wednesday's the only day that I have to be out for the day. So, I could do Tuesday, we can do Thursday, and we can do Monday.
Monday, Tuesday.
Let's do a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah. Afternoon.
Three o'clock?
That's, that's fine with me. I don't know everybody else, so, if they want to attend.
Do you want to send it, set it tentatively for the 28th at three o'clock?
Yeah.
And then just check with the members in the committee if that works?
Yeah.
And we'll warn it?
Okay.
I'll make a note of that.
Also, under other, one board member asked why we don't have an ROTC program, which some tech centers in other parts of the nation do. And I've wondered if that is something that the Education Committee should discuss.
If you want, I can find some more information on the ROTC program and bring it back to the Education Committee. I'd be happy to do that. Probably won't be this month with budget.
No, it, it can wait, you know, until after budget, but I think it's, it's an important vehicle for, for kids to, number one, for the drug problem, and number two, for ongoing education.
Yeah, it's, I'm not opposed to whatsoever. It's certainly something we can look into. I just don't know, I'm familiar with the program, but I don't know what all the requirements are to, to be part of it and what the expectations of as a school are to be part of it, so.
Based on last year's, this isn't about ROTC, but based on last year's Finance Committee, it seems that it was Ricky, John Goethe, Fran, and, well, Jim Budhans, so I don't know whether we've assigned some other additional person to that.
Well, look tomorrow, I have, send the email to committee members. I'm just going to set up, okay.
Is there any other issues?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For adjourn.